... meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. We could start with the roll call, please, Tammy.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Kristy Stellingworth.
Here.
Maria Bolfi.
Here.
Linda Yingling. Nubs Ashbeck.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. We could all.
It's not.
... face the fight before the... Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Airy Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. We do have some public comments to the board this evening and just like to read a statement for myself from the board. "We appreciate the participation in a school board meeting this evening. The public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person or if so, whether that person could have legal claim against you related to the statement you made this evening." You've been advised that... We have been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute privilege which protects defamatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk if anything he or she says during public comment period of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you for your participation. I know we have a couple that have requests, actually, one that's going to hand me a request momentarily, but I'd like to call to the table at this time Ron Bean. He's a bus driver and wants to talk about school bus safety.
Do you want me to sit or stand?
If you would sit if you're comfortable, Ron. If you prefer to stand, that's up to you, but we'd offer you the seat at the table there.
Well, just a quick comment before I read what I handed out here. Out in the lobby here, I just come from the Tomahawk Farmer's Market and I had some zucchinis left over, so if you want some free or charge, they're available. Anyway, what I have here are statements that I gathered from a number of school bus drivers, not only from the MAPS district, from other areas, but so I greatly condensed what was given to me. And so, this is for the suggestion... Suggested action to increase safety on MAPS school buses. Whereas, the goal of all people involved in the education and maturing of youth in the MAPS district is to accomplish that task safely. And whereas, each year, an increasing small percent of students are warned and then written up as being disrespectful and disruptive for whatever reason. And whereas, many students are picked up and delivered to the MAPS schools and then return home safely, so far, during the school year. And whereas, the term of distracted driving is being more and more a daily reality and is considered an enforceable traffic action. And whereas, the term bullying is being recognized today as a multi-form of aggression at all ages. And whereas, the average school bus driver tries to uphold all federal, state, and district rules to acquire a certified license and then to drive safely with a load of children whom many have no desire to follow the student handbook. Therefore, be it resolved that each bus have an onboard monitor, either part-time or full-time, with the possibility that administration level or teacher might occasionally be said monitor. It is intended that any action taken may not be another unfunded mandate. These statements from many drivers scripted by Ron Bean. I could answer a few questions. I do represent the Peterson Bussing Company. Michael Hawski here is from the Windor Bussing Company, so we're from the Merrill School Bus District.
So just a clarifying point to these public comments. It's your opportunity to bring that to the board, Ron, as I'm sure you know, but a couple clarifying questions would be the best we could do. Otherwise, we would put you on a committee-level agenda and we would have that discussion at that time, and then we could bring it to board business at a future meeting. Tonight, it's bringing a concern and a statement, thus a public comment. We don't get into question and answer during this segment.
Thank you.
Do you have a clarifying question?
I do. Just clarify, do either of the bussing companies, do they have video surveillance on the buses?
Some buses do have cameras, some don't. Just to give you an example, most of the Wassa buses have what they call video action cameras, where they can ignite that camera and see what's going on. Otherwise, the buses that in the Merrill area are chipped, and so you'd have to extract the chip after a complaint and then visually see if something is going on.
I believe Maria has a question for Ron as well.
Just one clarifying question. Has this concern been brought up to the bussing company as well?
We live with it on a daily basis, and some buses, not as bad, others, there's a routine disruption level.
Okay. Thank you.
One more. Is there somebody else ahead of me?
Not that I saw.
Just one more clarifying question. Is there, and maybe this would be somebody else of ministry member to answer this, or maybe Dr. Sample could answer this. Is there a codified process where there is complaints that the drivers can follow a process where the student is also addressed at the school level due to their behavior on the bus? So some sort of relationship there between the school?
Now, that's committee work compared to public comment.
Just asking, there's a process in place, that's all.
You can answer briefly, but there's...
Yeah, I'm asking for discussion, just yesterday I answered.
Yes.
Okay.
Ron, any other things you'd like to touch on? I think it's a well-written statement. We understand who we get in touch with you. We have your contact information, I believe, and I'll provide that to Tammy and Dr. Sample and see what we can do to get that on a future appropriate committee agenda.
Appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
I believe Melissa Yates has a form for me so I can call on her momentarily. Next on the public comment is Melissa Yates. She would come up to the table. The general topic or agenda item she would like to talk on this evening is the moving of elementary teachers without transparency to parents throughout the floor.
Hello. My name is Melissa Yates. I have three daughters in the school district, and thank you school board members for serving. As I'm speaking, I'm a little bit nervous. I can only imagine the first time you thought of all doing this, you're like, is this really what I want to do? So, thank you. I've prepared a letter and I think I sent, emailed it to all of you yesterday that I'd like to have incorporated in the reading minutes, and I will read it as well. Greetings, school board members. I'm the mother of three daughters that are in the well-school district. I would like to express some concerns over the staff transitions that is occurring in our elementary schools. When I brought my children to Washington Elementary, they were placed with positive, well-established teachers. Each year, my children build those relationships with not only their teacher, but also their sister's teachers and other teachers in the building. I worry about this positive relationship continuing into the 2019-2020 school year. My youngest daughter, Shelby, was greatly looking forward to being in Ms. Schultz's and Ms. Carr's fourth grade classroom, and she was devastated as well as we are, we all were, when we found out from friends that they were being moved to other positions in the district. After team teaching successfully for the past two years, and Ms. Schultz respectfully serving our school district for 30 years, they were informed on the last day of school that they were moving positions. I do not know if this is common knowledge at this point, but I do question why this was not discussed in a more open and transparent manner. The trust and relationship between a student and teacher is monumental to not only a child's educational growth, but also their mental and emotional health. Building that relationship is further enriched when a family stays in the area and is blessed to have a teacher like Ms. Schultz, who is teaching second and third generations. Why would a school district that prioritizes building this relationship and improving students' mental health unnecessarily transition staff with very little warning? Furthermore, our district prioritizes teacher retention and image, and I do wonder if unnecessary staff transitions are at the best interest of our educators and may lead to greater inefficiencies. I understand there are rule changes and needs throughout the district that will require teacher ruling. However, companies that people thrive in and are considered best places to work examine our employees' needs, strengths, and value their opinion. I value teachers and the long, thankless hours that they put in. This matter affects the Washington school community, and there is a need for an open and transparent discussion on this issue. I would like to have a community meeting to discuss this issue in more detail with the superintendent, Washington Elementary School principal, and the appropriate district administrative personnel in attendance. Thank you for your consideration. I do hope that together we can ensure that Merrill area school district is a healthy environment for all students, educators, and staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Anything else you'd like to add before I ask for any clarifying questions? And I guess stressing that during public comments, you have the opportunity to share your topic. Once again, clarifying questions, if you're doing just that, not getting into discussion or going back and forth with the topic. So it's information of providing that data to the board, having it put into the minutes and on the video, certainly that opportunity here. But clarifying questions, Tricia?
Twice you use the term unnecessary transfers. How do you determine that to be?
As far as the terminology, you know, any of the parents that I've talked to, nobody has sourced or has said any negative comments as to the teachers being... That they should be moved, that they're not doing their job correctly. I thought we had a really great atmosphere in Washington, so it's kind of out of the blue that it was moved, it was changed.
Thank you.
Maria?
I guess I have one question for administration. What I'm inferring, and perhaps wrongly so, is that there were two teachers that were moved, Mrs. Carr and Mrs. Schultz. Is that incorrect based on what you are saying, Mrs. Yates?
That's incorrect.
Okay.
Well, one teacher. They team taught, but one teacher of that team was moved.
So Mrs. Schultz was moved and Mrs. Carr remains in the same position. Thank you.
As far as I know, that's not correct. I thought that Mrs. Carr was moved to first grade. The first grade teacher was moved to the fourth grade, and that Mrs. Schultz is being moved to Maple Grove, and the Maple Grove teacher is being moved to Washington.
Maybe we can help this. Could you clarify?
Buildings. Move buildings. She moved grades. Correct. She still remains in the same building.
But not at the same grade?
That's correct.
Mrs. Carr.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just for a point of personal clarification, I did see your email. I received that and it was directed to me, so I guess I did not know who else received your email. Could you enlighten me as to who you all sent it to?
Sure. I sent it to everybody in the board, and I have extra copies if you weren't able to receive it. And some people have... Sorry, I forgot.
I received your email.
Okay.
And then I have another one for Tammy, if she needs it for the conference.
Okay, that would be great. Kristy, were you able to receive that? Because I know...
Yes, of course, yours came back.
And there is a long last name involved, and if you didn't click on the link right, then there's a chance that you tried to follow the pattern and messed up by one letter unintentionally. So if you could provide one to Kristy and one to Tammy.
Okay.
We'll look into that. My other clarifying question, can you send that to Dr. Sample? Tricia Dieter was mentioned in there as the Washington Elementary Principal.
I did not send it there. I thought...
Or I can forward, either way.
We can forward that. What I'm doing is trying to establish who did see that, because when I see an email, I thought it was to me.
Okay.
And then I would go through to ask for policy, which levels have been made aware of a complaint or suggestion, depending where that falls. And then I would start by asking Dr. Sample, who is representing level three, if you look at the policy, board being level four, working our way to level two and one, to see where we're really at in the process. A lot of times, this is an awareness piece, a public comment, and sometimes levels two and three may not have an idea and have not worked on that yet. So I just appreciate the knowledge and who that all went to. Thank you for your time, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is recognition. The first recognition this evening is for the Social Norms Youth Group at Prairie River Middle School for their contributions to the local youth tobacco prevention initiatives, specifically the e-cigarette epidemic. Following students sit on the PRMS Social Norms Youth Group, Gabby Krieger, Spencer Smith, Haley Noack, Hannah Went, Hannah Busher, Blake Hagan, Parker Welch, Richard Lemon, and Michaela Geiger. There's an attached letter from Judy Sargent of the Lincoln County Health Department talking about the recommendation of this group and what they've put together in these initiatives. So we'd like to recognize them this evening. I don't believe anyone could attend, so let's just have a quick round of applause for their group. Our next recognition is for Michael Casper and Hunter Wallace as 2019 Academic All-State Honorees from the Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin, abbreviated GCAW. The criteria for these students to meet was, number one, a cumulative GPA of 3.25 or greater; two, a participation at least 75% of their team's varsity matches; and three, they need to be an upperclassman, a sophomore, junior, or a senior. Based on summer and perhaps honing their golf skills, Michael and Hunter were unable to be here this evening, so we'd like to recognize them in their absence. So a quick round of applause for them. Last and certainly not least this evening in recognition is our neighbors to the east, Rhindell Printing. They were extremely helpful in the creation of the Prairie River Middle School Yearbook. Bill Best, Robin Smith, and Sarah Schenzel went out of their way and bent over backwards by responding quickly to emails and last-minute concerns. They were very helpful and patient, and they were behind schedule in completing this year's yearbook. Appreciate their attentiveness and the amazing customer service provided by our friends over at Rhindell and their employees. Once again, they were unable to be here. Let's have a quick round of applause for Rhindell Printing. Next on our agenda, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative reports. Dr. Sample?
The first report is the summative monitoring report from Glendo Ojenski. While this will be tabled, because we couldn't bring it to the CTP committee, I did want to explain just a couple of things. What we'll be bringing to the next CTP committee is a change from the spotlight on education to a monitoring report. We want it to be more specific when we're talking about student achievement and social, emotional wellness, and disciplinary issues, and so that's going to be a much improved report. It's not going to be the flavor of the month as we've had, but it's going to be a lot of data and a lot of information that the board wants to see. So we'll look forward to that discussion at the next CTP committee. Also, to let you know, we're going to be working on some of this as it pertains to our district scorecard on August 8th and 9th, and so you're going to see some more summative measures in our district scorecard, and we're looking forward to refining that and making it a much better process.
Kevin?
Yes.
Notice the example is just for elementary school, but take it the final product will be comprehensive to the end of it.
Absolutely, and we're even looking at an assessment now that will go pre-K-12 as an additional assessment to give us better measures. So yes, that's just an example right now. The food service report from Laura Zastro is attached. You can see that we're still projecting a profit from this year as we have for the last four prior. I know Brian is here, if you have any more specific questions. It's not as much of a profit. I know we've had to change some of our processes, procedures, and even purchasing due to federal regulations, and... But it also should be pointed out that our school lunch prices have not increased in the last several years, and so that also has something to do with the profit not being as great. Next report is the quarterly out-of-state travel report. Scott Mackin attended the reading recovery conference, and then we also have Joan Tabor attending the trauma-sensitive school conference, and that's the reimbursement for mileage. So very short report from this past month. Quarterly summary of purchases between 5,000 and 9,999 has been provided by Brian Dasher. Any questions on this report? This is the final quarter. Karen's report is going to be covered later. We had the MAPS School-Based Mental Health Service update, but what I see in its place will appear later on in the board report, and that's talking about the position for physical therapists. So we will make sure that we get that available to you. It's a duplicate report, what you're seeing in hers right now, and then it goes down to board business. So we will handle that specific topic summary sheet in board business.
Tammy?
Just a quick question. I see, and maybe this is not the right spot to ask it, but perhaps it is. I see that there were grants awarded to districts all around us for mental health recently. I'm trying to look to see, but it seemed like it was every district around us, up to $75,000 for grants for mental health. I'm wondering if we applied for those grants, if we didn't receive them, what the evaluation of how we applied perhaps was, and if there's other opportunity to apply for those grants.
Do you know the specific name of those grants?
I'm looking for it. I'm sorry, I'm on my iPhone.
Because we apply for just about everything we can.
Yeah, this was one that just came out this week. Everest, Medford, Marshfield, Mozeney, smaller schools, all received dollars from... I'm making this up. $10,000, but the top was $75,000. So again, just wondering if we had... Here, mental, school-based, 1920 school-based mental health services grants. DPI released a list. Again, Medford, Mozeney, Everest, Wassa, Rhinelander, Wisconsin Rapids, several within, you know, the basic area.
Can we table that to the CTP?
Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
The Director of Human Resources report is also available, and for those of you who have yet to meet Eddie, I think everybody did, at least by tonight, the report is from Eddie Then, our new HR director. One thing that you can see, and I'm not skipping over any part of his report because it's all very important, but in other news and information, he's been extremely busy. He's working right now on standard operating procedures for the... And some visuals for the HR department. And so, all the work that has been done before is not by the wayside, but he's making some major improvements there. You can also see a little bit further up in his report that Debbie Sprague will be moving from the split HR finance to Sue Vandergie's AP position, and so we are working with the internal candidate, and she's going to be new as well. So we've got, of the three people in that department, two of them are new, and they've been extremely busy getting together and making sure that we've got processes in place and honing in on those processes. Also, currently working on the offer of employment letters to reflect why we do not negotiate salary with our compensation plan, and there's also been some handbook revisions that he's been working on. So there's a lot of really good stuff going on in the HR department.
You see Brian Dasher's topic summary sheet for the monthly budget update.
Anybody have any questions with the monthly budget update?
Technology update from Kesha. Kesha, like the rest of the administrators, or at least central office administrators now, assuming you'll be building administrators, working on the scorecard, and you can see how her department has done with the past scorecard. It should be rolling into the new one on August 8th and 9th, as everybody else will. You can also see the technology report with the district for 1819 closing out that year, and then library technology integration report, as well as IPAC collection advantages update. Any questions at all for Kesha or myself? My superintendent's report. You see the monthly activities. We had a conference call with student education. I'm pleased to report that our administrative team will be presenting at the next conference next week, as a matter of fact, and so we're looking forward to that. We're going to be presenting about culture and climate. That conference is attended by, I believe, 33 other states in the nation. We're very glad that it's in Milwaukee, right in our backyard, so we can be in attendance and also present there. Educator Effectiveness rollover, myself and Eddie have been busy, and Ryan Mortenovich has been... We've been very busy working with Lyndon Myers at CS9 to roll over. We've got to roll over from the 1819 school year, add new staff, and then we're also creating our forums so that there's no mistake when a teacher sees their burden within the program, those are the forums that they have to complete, and it's not jumbled with every forum that's under the sun. So we've been working real hard on that. And then finally, the strategic planning format has been changed. I'm still going to keep the community conversation progress there. It's just going to... It won't be a live forum, but you'll see the student achievement, success, fiscal responsibility, community partnerships, and student and staff wellness came out of the strategic planning. So I will add bullet points as we address that, and the most important part of this is, especially when it comes to student and staff wellness, that's going to reflect on our district scorecard. We want to be able to measure our progress with that. And like I said, we're really going to hone in on student achievement and having more than just students completing one year's worth of growth. So you're going to see a lot of things coming out of the CTP, and there'll be a lot of discussion happening there. And then the rest of our topics and our agenda is for a weekly cabinet. All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample, for all the updates.
John or Kevin, wouldn't you mind closing the blinds a little bit behind you, that window? Tim, look at John's right in the light. Thank you. Much better.
Next on our agenda this evening is the committee reports, any possible action. The first committee report there is the Finance HR Committee. We had the draft minutes attached from the July 3rd, 2019 committee meeting. John Smith, the chair, and other members of the Finance HR Committee are available for questions. It is information-only this evening. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance or HR Committee this evening? Seeing no hands, we'll go to the next on the agenda. The next committee is the CTP, known as Curriculum... The next committee is the CTP, known as Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, based on some different things going on. We did not have a forum, so we were able to reschedule coming soon. Maria, it's a July 10 meeting, so we will move on from there. So, there's no questions or information because that is still an upcoming.
Right.
We don't have anything labeled in the next section of unfinished business, so we'll move right on to the Board of Education business for this evening. The first item on the agenda under Board of Education Business is consideration of the rescission of approval of the Associate Principal position at Kate Goodrich Elementary School. Does anyone have a motion for me this evening?
So, I'm off. Motion, what would the motion be, I guess? Motion to approve consideration, rescission of approval of the Associate Principal position at Kate Goodrich Elementary School.
We have a motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second? Second by Christie. Next, we would have discussion. Jeremy, would you like the floor first on your motion?
Yeah, just to ask you, Mr. Blake, where does this come from? What was the basis for bringing this back to the board?
Anytime we have a vote, through Robert's Rules of Order, you have the opportunity to rescind at a future meeting, either if something new comes to light, or some other information that someone would like clarified in the boardroom. So, rescission is then allowing someone to motion, someone to second, and then having discussion on that particular topic. So, I did have a board member other than yourself ask for this to be added on there, so I put it on there.
Oh, I didn't ask for this.
That's what I'm saying. So, when you motioned it.
Oh, okay. I got you.
I was looking a little bit surprised, but it made sense that you're eager to help. So, thank you for that. I called on you first as the motioner per Robert's Rules.
Has there been more information brought to light on this than we didn't know before? Were we less wondering on it?
I certainly would leave that to any board member that would like to share any information that they feel is pertinent. I've been requested to clarify some Robert Rules things, and if they would like to share, I guess I would allow elaboration at this time.
Well, no. My only thoughts on this is I feel if we're going to consider rescinding, which I'm not a fan of to begin with, that I think it's only fair to consider rescinding the entire topic, which is brought before, which is both schools, not just Kate.
Keeping in mind the motion as you made it was for one, there was two motions, so what was asked to be put on this evening was clear of the consideration of rescission for the one. While I appreciate your concern, you would be amending your own motion for rescission of two separate motions, and then we would need a second one which is not on the agenda, and that does fall under different Robert's Rules as far as majority required, just so you're aware. But what was asked to be put on was as you motioned, and the second from Christie.
I guess I would like to make that in the form of an amendment, then, to amend the motion.
What we'd have to have is a second motion later, because it is separate voting.
Okay.
Because there is separate rules of order. The first one being an agenda item, just for clarification, and I turned to our friends at Wasby for a freebie, just to make sure we all have these, just the Cliff Notes version, instead of going through our large guide that I'm not sure if everyone had the chance to read over the time of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. It's great reading.
Yeah, I'm not making any decisions in the last that we will get.
Nice, but we have them. So, it is to be left in the boardroom for Tammy to collect with our board goals, so we don't misplace them at home or in transit, so thank you. So, to go through the difference, if it's an agenda item, and you have a motion and a second, what we need for that to be approved, and we will still open for further discussion, would be a simple majority of those in attendance this evening, regardless of who was in attendance for the prior vote. That is not important. If you would motion a second item that was not on tonight's agenda, it is a two-thirds majority because it's a non-agenda item per Robert's Rules. So, at this time, I would ask if anyone else has discussion they would like to have on the topic. Christie?
I just want to clarify that we had the vote that I voted nay for the Associate Principal at Kate Goodrich.
Okay. So, clarification for those in attendance and wondering what that means. We had on the record in the minutes, a 4-3 vote approving the position of Associate Principal on the June 19 meeting of the board. We had a roll call vote. It was heard, an "aye" vote by four members and three "nay" votes. It was per a roll call vote, and as I asked Tammy to do. The interpretation per the minutes, per the clerk, and per the recorder were that after time had passed, meaning after the meeting has adjourned, and we move forward, Christie saw minutes and had some discussion, saying no, I voted nay. So, we turn to our Robert's Rules and we say, what can be done? Is it as simple as Tammy fix the notes and move on? And the answer to that is no, Robert's Rules has a process, because everybody left and things are in place here, meaning at that time, the administration, under our authority, Dr. Sample, provided the Human Resources Director the go-ahead to put out on webcam the information for that position to be posted. While I was on vacation, Christie made people aware of what the intended vote was, and what she said, and where we separate Robert's Rules is what happened that evening versus what happens in the future. That evening, anyone raising their hand that voted "aye" or "nay" could have said, "Could you tell me, Tammy, please?" Or Nubs as clerk, "Who voted what?" Because I thought I heard only two in favor and five against, but my math isn't the same. That didn't happen, unfortunately. If we were so focused on next topic, I don't know why. I called, if you want to look at the video, I did ask for clarification, because I knew we had spent quite a few minutes, if not over an hour, on the topic. So, I don't know. It's a great learning opportunity for the entire board and to study some Robert's Rules, because we could have had a simple question, we could have asked for a change or a reconsiderance under Robert's Rules. Unfortunately, after we get to adjournment, that's when we get to rescission or rescinding a vote. So, that's what got us here. It's not as simple as a clerical error that was just documented incorrectly. It was truly the belief of myself, the recorder, and the clerk as to what was said. It has nothing to do with, do I believe Christie? She had high integrity. I believe what she's saying. I listened to it many times upon my return from vacation, and unfortunately, our friends at Merrill Productions didn't zoom in on you, the microphone didn't pick up one way or the other, but either way, we left that meeting, and that's what brings us to rescission. So, that's a quick history lesson on Robert's Rules that probably nobody wanted this evening to tell you all of the conversations, and getting a little bit of coaching and mentoring from Mike Jelko from Boardman Clark. John, would you like?
We have a clarifying question to Christie. Are you saying that you intended to vote nay, or that you audibly said the word "nay" at last meeting?
I said the word "nay" was not on my mind.
And so, to...
And I can hear it. I wasn't, I know myself, I'm following it.
Well, I know, but that's why we're having the discussion, because I heard "aye," Kevin heard "aye," Tammy recorded "aye," Nubs as clerk recorded "aye." There was a group of witnesses in the room that heard "aye," and now I'm being asked to comprehend that the word was "nay," and I just want to make sure my reality of five weeks ago is still reality, because I'm a witness to "aye." I'm not a witness to the word "nay." So, I could understand if you intended to say the word "nay" versus that the actual word was "nay." That doesn't make any sense to me right now.
This is because, you know, like, no, no, it's canceling, that's what I did. I knew what I voted. He told me I don't have to listen, no, they go back to this. So, my intention was to vote "nay," and that's terrible.
Okay. So, then it would be a safe and true statement that Kevin, Tammy, and Nubs got your vote wrong that evening, because they're the responsible parties that are to record it. On my behalf, parliamentary procedure, it's not my job. I walked out of here that evening thinking the motion carried after about 60 minutes of debate, but the recorders got your vote wrong that evening. That would be a factual statement.
Yes. Maria?
I guess I just have one other thing, too. Your integrity, to me, is very high, as well as everybody else on the board, and I think this is very unfortunate, because not only would it be a statement to say that John, Kevin, Nubs, Tammy got it wrong, I was on your side if, in fact, you said "nay." I wanted it to be "nay." And when we did the roll call, and Kevin said 4 to 3 in favor, I would have been the first one to jump on the table and say, "You're wrong, Kevin. Christie said 'nay.'" So, while I think your integrity is up here, I think everybody else who was here that night, their integrity is up here, too. So, I don't know what it was, Christie, if it was, and I can't hear you on the video, I listened to it probably a dozen times. So, I think it would be unfortunate to go back now and rescind what we did that night, because it would be, you know, literally interpreting that Nubs, Tammy, Dr. Sample, Kevin, myself, Brett, and John did not hear it correctly.
And Linda was sitting next to me, and she would do it.
And that could be when she's not doing it.
Right. But that would be unfortunate that nobody spoke up then, at that moment, when Kevin did the roll call, Tammy did the roll call, and it was announced that it passed 4 to 3. Again, I would have been the first person to jump up and say, "This is wrong. It didn't pass." So, I think it's unfortunate that nobody said anything at that moment, whether it was Linda, whether it was Christie, to say, "This is wrong. It didn't pass."
And one clarifying thing, Jeremy, before I call on you. I beat myself up on prideful following of Robert's Rules and going through things to make sure that we're doing things in the best order. I joke with Paul every once in a while, that he's a local parliamentarian, and unfortunately, he couldn't be there, because he would have perhaps called a point of order if needed. But it certainly wasn't a point of order, it was a point of understanding. And tying back to the video, before I go to your question, Jeremy, is line in the sand after there was a motion for adjournment, clearly in Robert's Rules changed our course of action. The only video part, or to your point, the discussion on integrity ties back just to that. It has nothing to do with Robert's Rules, or where we stand, or how we fix that. That's the rescission part again, rescinding a vote. So, I don't want to beat that up, and I don't want you to think that I didn't watch the same video and listen to the audio a number of times in a number of meetings, because I did, and then I was cautioned against that by Mr. Jelko from Boardman Clark, because at that point, the meeting had adjourned, and he said, "You should really focus on your intent of doing the right thing within Robert's Rules," and that was putting it on the agenda for rescission, a motion a second. The majority of those members here tonight wanting to make sure that they could go through that again and understand the situation. So, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I wanted to clarify that. Jeremy?
I have a few points to make. Unfortunately, as like anything, as amazing as technology is, and as nice as to have video and audio to fall back on, I've screened hours and hours of meeting, video of different meetings, and unfortunately, sometimes you may not quietly like this and have the mic down your throat when you're talking, sometimes you're just not picked up. I wasn't here that day. I deliberately, like, I can't say for sure if, you know, which way Christie voted. I guess I look at it tonight where, like Maria and John said, I don't doubt Christie's integrity, anybody else in this room. I've been on this board for five years, four years, and I like to think everyone in this room is here for the right reasons, and does make decisions for the right reasons. So, on that note, I say that we take our fellow board members' word for it, and we back her, and if it requires, if it's to the point of taking a re-vote tonight, then so be it. I don't see a reason to doubt her. I mean, she believes in her heart that she, the decision that she made, you know, and sometimes as board members, we may not be focused 110% on our neighbor, and we may not know 110% that if John votes, you know, yes on something, unless I'm looking right at him, 100%, my attention focused on him, I can't say for certain what his vote was. So, I say that we back our board member, believe in her, what she says is true, if she believes what she says. She believes in her decision, and I think we back her, and we follow through on that.
Anybody else have a round of discussion before I turn back to the second with Mr. Smith? Do I, John, go ahead?
Respectfully, Brett and I debated for about an hour, back and forth, amongst other people chiming in, and so, when the vote was taken, I was staring directly at Christie. I wouldn't, really adamantly wanted to know what she voted, because her vote was a matter of 4, a 4-3 versus a 4-4 tie.
3-4. 3-4, the other way.
And so, when the vote came in, I rest assured the vote motion was going to carry, and Maria rests unassured, because she was on the other side of the argument, and her motion counts failed. So, that is, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But that is the reality that I live with today, and I'm not going to back and recreate my own personal history of the situation. And what's at hand right now is whether or not this board wishes to be able to, at any point in time, reopen a motion for yet another round of debate and consideration at subsequent meetings. That's not a world that I understand, and it's not really a world I want to go down, because it'll set a precedence, and so, if we disagree this evening on another motion that comes up later, there's nothing then to therefore stop me putting you through the same rescension process next month, which, if we do, I most likely will, because it's happening right now. So, I mean, what we're trying to decide upon is if we want to go down this rabbit hole, or do we want motions to carry, and then when they carry, administration follow through with our motions? Because right now, we have five weeks of pause, we have two candidates that may or may not be an Associate Principal out there somewhere, depending on what we decide, and we have a lot of wasted time. So, I'm not interested in entertaining this situation ever again, so I'll vote no to any rescission of any motion, because this is to be conducted in the evening of business. I don't wish to review.
And a clarifying point on last month's personnel recorder, the HR report, we did welcome a new principal to Kate Goodrich. So, imagine the roller coaster and the welcome to the district, it's for Amy, thinking, we're working on staffing, we're working with interviews with Dr. Sample, and we're to that point, and now I'm not sure if I even have an Associate Principal. Not that it was promised, however, it was laid out, and then we got to that point. There were three and a half weeks, took the brakes on cautiously to get to this point, which was the correct and prudent thing to do. Just keep that in mind, that people speak on climate and culture and different things, and if there's a message besides Mr. Smith's point to that, as to how other people will take that if we're waiting for the next month or future meetings. The only clarifying point on this tension also here again, just to try to finalize that, is if a final action statement or event had happened, and an offer would have been made prior to the putting the brakes on, that that would be considered something that would not then have had us put on the agenda, this consideration, because that would get into possibly damages to the district, possibly someone resigning. Other districts, so. Renotification and that happened in a timely manner where worst case, to your point, is that we couldn't perhaps not have our, our top candidate or top two candidates that were looking to an extended offer to. But that's other business for another time. Motion on the table, Mr. Ratliff, is that for rescission of the approval of the associate principal position at Kate Goodrich Elementary to second by Christie? For clarification, an high vote will state that he wanted rescinded and that position goes back to prior to the June meeting. A nay vote will say you wanted status quo, just for clarification, direct to Tammy.
I mean, you're rescinding it.
And a nay means leave it status quo.
So just to clarify, if we were to vote to rescind, why couldn't we just take a revote? Why would it have to be just taken off the table completely? Why couldn't we just re-vote on it tonight?
It is a, in essence, a legal, Jeremy, rescinding it is the only way through Robert's rules to do that other than reconsider.
Okay, but the way you worded it just a minute ago, it sounded like that before we rescind it, then we go back to pre-June. We go back to no principal at all, but...
No, we go back to no position.
Right.
Of associate principal. And at that point in Robert's rules, someone could bring up reconsideration.
Okay, that makes sense.
And we could go down that.
Yeah, just like we worded it before, yeah, I get it now.
I was clarifying that prior to June, there was no position.
Right.
On that meeting, Mr. Lee, through that four to three vote, that it was approved. The explanation now we're at, your motion is second.
Can we add one more thing? Just for Paul and Jeremy, because you guys weren't able to be here for this. I just want to clarify that this was argued for almost an hour. And we were very much in conflict as a board as to whether or not we should hire an associate principal at Kate Goodrich. Okay, it was very much, we are a board that does very well at, typically we agree on a lot of stuff, we know what's right for the district. It was very contentious. And to say that perhaps we didn't hear what John said, we didn't hear what Christie said, we didn't hear what I said. There was great lengths taken to record this vote. It was roll call, it was one person at a time, and then it was Kevin saying, "There is a four to three vote and this is approved." And clarified through Tammy. This was not a case of, "I muffled my response." And again, I mean, I want to clarify to you guys, you know me, I did not want the position approved. If I would have heard that I had the majority in the room, again, I would have been all over it. We couldn't have done anything more right than we did that night to clarify who voted which way. To rescind it at this point in time would be a black eye on this board. And again, I was against the position. Please consider that, please consider that as a board, we did everything we could that night to record this vote appropriately. We are all adults, we can all hear what is said. And if we didn't, that's on the individuals, it is not on this board to rescind this.
Well, fair enough at this time, we've been asked to call a question and I would like roll call vote on that as well. So Tammy, if you could roll call this.
Jeremy Ratliff?
Epstein.
Epstein? John Smith?
Nay.
Christie Stollinger?
Aye.
Maria Holfing?
Nay.
John Sashwell?
Nay.
Bob Crowe?
Nay.
Brett Lawler?
Nay.
Kevin Beck?
Nay.
So it looks a motion fail of one to seven, so one to six to one with one abstention.
One to six.
Okay.
And Klay McCallum? I would have brought this in front of the law if I didn't know what I really, my guilt and my confidence. So you're here listening to us. And I'm glad I brought it up just so it's clarified.
Yeah, we did so very politely, professionally and certainly, um, understanding the review and we want to get your heart and mind as to what was done and there's a process in Robert's rules and we did that. I think we take this truly as a learning experience for all of us and I encourage all board members, regardless of roll call vote, please listen to the votes and bring it up that night, it would be much, much easier. At any rate, we did not have that in what you were saying, so. I do believe it's the first time since I've been on the board that I've been a part of that, so. Thanks for bearing with me some data. And to do this, especially for this evening, as was stated by other board members, all board members, we would consider to have high integrity and can thank them for being on the board and doing what they do for the right reasons, as students of that. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. With that, then we can talk about this later, but maybe this is the right time. Dr. Sample, in the motion fail, we would need to be working with the HR director to extend an offer. And being that that hasn't been done with this in mind, though, could I see a quick show of hands? If we could attend a Thursday meeting, a special board meeting for approval of hiring of that particular position?
Depending on what, what Thursday, I could definitely make a...
This Thursday, two days.
This Thursday, okay.
Time?
Or time. I would say normal time at five thirty unless we needed to adjust that. I'm trying to make sure we have forum and have a quick open discussion to make sure we're not missing opportunities on these particular candidates. And you feel they're putting past this week, so we need to list it tomorrow. As soon as we can do it, it'll be Thursday based on that.
We have to go four thirty instead of five thirty.
Can we do four thirty?
Four thirty Thursday.
Four thirty Thursday? It will be the only item on the agenda to make an hour, it is to go through. I believe even doing this, we will have our human resources director presenting that discussion point on the agenda. Dr. Sample was out of district, I believe, that day. That's Sturgeon Day for the legal conference.
Right.
Was the, so. We'll bring that up and that will be then posted by Tammy. I'll make a quick note to go through that for future meetings later, so we can cover that. Thank you. Moving on on the Board of Education business, second item on there is the district student academic standards. Wisconsin academic standards, you can catch the topic summary sheet from Glenda Ojinski. It was a, or is a recommended motion, we have a motion this evening. Maria?
I'd recommend a motion to approve the adoption of the Wisconsin academic standards for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll second.
A motion Maria, a second by Jeremy. Do we have any discussion on that topic? Hearing, no discussion on that motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on the agenda was to be the approval of the updated coaches handbook. At the last finance HR committee meeting, we did not have all, we did not have that as an attachment, I believe, Mr. Smith. So I would look for a motion to table this. John?
I recommend a motion to table the updated version of the coaches handbook to allow additional time for committee review.
One by John, second by Maria, discussion Jeremy?
What the proper terminology be to delay, because table means to deal with indefinitely?
No, it doesn't.
Unless extending other board committees, table means to completely.
That's to, the word indefinitely is in that process. Table just means to put on the table, so you can pick it back off the table.
Interesting.
And it's just a interpretation or a definition that we've used as then Mr. Smith's explanation. Jeremy defends the common operating of the board. Understood. So for better or worse, there is nine of us versus twenty-two.
That's true.
So we can have these casual conversations on that and I do appreciate that. But we do have the motion on a second, any other discussion on table in this for further committee review? If not, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, any abstentions? Motion to table carries and will be sent back to the finance HR committee and presented over leave by John Miller. The next item on our agenda is the college and career planning specialist position increased from before 2019-2020 from a point eight zero FTE to a one point zero FTE. There was some attached information or summary sheet from John Higemeister from Bridges Virtual Academy. And there's a recommended motion from the finance HR committee, do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I'd recommend a motion to increase the college and career planning specialist position for the 2019-2020 school year from point eight zero FTE to one point zero FTE.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of full-time physical therapists with an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I recommend a motion to secure a full-time physical therapist and enter into a cooperative program agreement, section sixty-six point zero three zero one with another Wisconsin LEA to share, to cost share the position.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion on that particular motion or this topic? Paul?
Physical therapy, is this for general students, is this for athletes? For students with IEPs that require physical therapy?
I'm just, thank you. Another clarifying point, if you could, I'll give the floor in a second now, but since Karen was walking up here. In the past, we've done different things to provide this service through the IEPs. And we'll go through a quick history lesson on how this is certainly advantageous to the district to do that.
Yep, physical therapists are very hard to come by. When I entered this position, um, three years ago, we did not have one and went quite a few months without one. And I was able to secure one through a company in California for a physical therapist that lived in Rothschild. And that's forward two years, they have moved. This past year, I was unable to secure, working with North Central, working with area physical therapists to try to track. There was no one available, we ended up paying propensity for services to some families. I've been in dialogue with a neighboring district who also needs a part-time physical therapist. And this would allow both districts to be able to meet the district's needs.
What's the level, therapist is not just a physical, is it a child therapist, a special needs therapist? Is that what makes it so hard to find?
It's physical therapist, most, a lot of physical therapists as well as occupational therapists who work in a hospital or medical setting. Of course, to a school setting, it's working with students for a lot of their physical needs. And they would be all students who have physical therapy in their IEPs.
Now, do you have a question?
She answered my question.
You mean, you're a job, now that she shares some information, so thank you. Any other questions or clarifying points on this topic or on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening for board business is under letter F, approval of the fiscal year twenty budget with an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the 2019-2020 original budget pass, pass to them.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second? Second by Brett, he's been trying all night, Maria, sorry. All right. Any, any discussion or clarifying questions for Mr. Dasher, we could have him come up here? Hearing none or seeing your hands raised, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Letter G on our agenda on board business this evening is approval of five days vacation of activities directors, two hundred and forty day contract, with an attached topic summary sheet explaining that from Dr. Sample and Eddie Den. The recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Motion by Maria?
I recommend a motion to get five vacation days to the two hundred and forty day contract of activities director.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second? Second by John, any discussion? Would you like to clarify quickly how we got to this moment with?
It's actually interesting because we, um, John Miller asked to go to two hundred and forty contract days from two hundred and...
Twenty?
Twenty, because it was more reflective of the work, time that he put in, but he asked to do so with no increase in pay. And then we modified his vacation schedule, so we increased his contract days by twenty and then we gave five of his own days back to him. So, um, it's basically just to make sure that his contract reflects the right amount of vacation for that type of employee. But it's really semantics because it doesn't cost the district anything and we just happen to have an individual in that position that probably works too hard, I guess.
He was very open to that discussion, he took to make sure when he's asked every year, what the number of days worked, this just didn't fit the contract. He was very open, not bragging, just flat out said, "Aye." What I'm doing is to be here at these extra times because when other people have perhaps a spring break or vacation, activities still go on, if it's a play, if it's a sporting event, so. He either needs to delegate that or to attend and I know Mr. Murray and Dr. Sample are looking into any ways to make sure Mr. Miller remains happy and healthy in his position. With that being said, is there any other discussion or clarifying questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote unanimously. The next items are two different first readings of policies with numbers to be determined. And they were fed through the finance HR committee with the recommended motion. Do we have any motions this evening on policy first readings under letter H of our agenda? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the policy, which number would be determined of the balanced budget policy as a first reading and forwarding as a second reading.
Second.
Motion, or John, second by Maria, do we have any discussion or clarifying questions on the motion or the policy?
Do have a clarification.
Go ahead.
Perhaps, when we say first reading forwarded as a second reading, the minute we approve this, it becomes policy. It does not need to be read again, is that correct?
So you have the second reading, it's being approved as a first reading, now it's being forwarded as a second. So it will be on the consent agenda for next meeting.
So after second?
If you wanted to do that, you would waive the first reading.
At committee.
At committee, you would waive it?
You would waive it on the board vote.
I can, you Tammy? So we could do it now?
So we could amend the motion?
Would you like to amend the motion?
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion. I'd like to amend the motion to waive the... I'd like to amend the motion to waive the first reading and forward as a second reading?
Approve as a second reading.
Approve as a second reading.
Would you do a second review, Jeremy?
We only do two.
Do you have an amended motion? Would you like to clarify if that is, please? Can you do a vote on the amendment, please?
So the amendment would be to, really, you would be striking out, approving as a first reading, forwarding as a second reading and replacing it with waive the first reading and approve as a second reading.
All right, so that is the amended motion. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any extensions?
Can I, two seconds of that?
Okay.
Maria's second.
Okay, so amendment.
And now let's vote on that amended motion. All those in favor of that amended motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any extensions? Motion, amended motion carries. Do you have another policy? John, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I recommend a motion to approve policy number to be determined fraudulent personation controls by waiving the first reading and approving as a second reading.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Maria, any discussion or clarifying questions on the motion of that topic?
Can I just make a clarifying statement? If we do this at committee, Tammy, right, we don't have to worry about amending these motions. So if the committee brings it as, yeah, okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
Yes, that's.
So if we want to not have policy committee meeting, we can do it here and speed it through.
Yep.
Any other clarifying questions, information or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. The next item on our agenda, letter I, is the board's expulsion philosophy. We do periodically review our current expulsion philosophy in order to give direction to the administration. There was an attached topic summary sheet. Looking for any discussion? Would you like to give a little background on our review of that, Dr. Sample?
Certainly, we've, we've come an awful long ways with our expulsion philosophy and it's the most difficult job of any board and administrators with expulsions. That's why it's very important that we give direction because we're not going to bring a student before you and take everybody through something that can be that traumatic without direction. And so this topic summary sheet reflects the most recent philosophy that you as a board has, have given to us as administrators for direction. There have been no changes since last year and I, my hat's off to the board. This year, when we have to entertain this process, it, as painful as it is, it's been a very, um, effective means of getting our students back into, into school if that's the wish. So it's come a long ways. I'm very proud of this topic summary sheet, but if there's any revisions at all, if there's any tweaks, the administrative team really appreciate that.
Is there any discussion on this issue? Pretty tough discussion, someone wants to motion the existing philosophy?
Well, once again, I can't get the summary sheet to open.
I could have a discussion point.
Can't win today.
From what I've witnessed, I think there has been a lot of improvement and it's a very logical, um, process that we take. I know the one bullet point says, should we consider more pre-expulsions agreements in lieu of expulsions with reinstatement? But I really believe that the pre-expulsion agreements are all in place. And so it wouldn't be in lieu of, we currently have a practice where everyone is clearly forewarned, um, that it's coming. And everything that I've witnessed was no surprise expulsion type philosophy. And I very much like the reinstatement capability because, um, that basically puts it back into the hands of the families and the students. So if they wish to put forth the proper effort, they can still make it across the stage. And it also gives control to the administration and teachers that this is the terms by which you get a public education from this moment forward. It's what everyone else agrees to when they behave, but this is what your agreement is if you wish to continue. So I've been quite impressed from where we came, um, three years ago.
Paul, I agree, I think it's a, it's a learning process for us, it is a greater learning process for students. They have to take ownership of their life, it's an important thing, high school is different, sir. And if we can prevent one from really going down the wrong path, by this philosophy, we can do this.
And, and to clarify, Paul, as you can imagine, Johnny Bridges, over the years, he's been on the board. And I've seen myself invest to the, the history on how we evolved to this point. It's been a lot of collaboration and work here at the table. And the review of it periodically, if it's annually or otherwise, to make sure we're going through the direction to provide Dr. Sample with that guidance to continue down that path. It's a wonderful thing we have. While I, I don't look forward to any of those expulsion hearings, it is certainly very well explained to students, parents and educators and administrators alike, understand that needs to be done. If it has to be at that particular point, I certainly would like to give kudos to all our administrators because they go through many interventions and many opportunities. Yet they understand what the board has for expectations, not only as described by state statute, but that of local philosophy of governance. So that collaboration is appreciated. Jeremy, can I see your?
Actually, I second what you said, I was gonna say the same thing. As much as I dislike attending expulsion meetings, I can't say enough about administration. I mean, they really do leave no stone unturned when it comes to investigation and, um, me personally, and I ask a lot of questions. Every peck that I've seen, there's, there's nothing, nothing left to be second guessed, it's in very plain terms. And I can't imagine the pleasant experience for a few in the administration either. But for the diligence and the effort you go through with each and every single expulsion investigation, there's something to be said for that.
Thank you.
Outside, outside of your normal work duties.
Any other discussion points? Clarification on that? Proceed with direction about your sample to continue going through that philosophy as depicted in the topic summary sheet this evening?
Yep.
Would anyone like to put that in the form of motion? Should we have that in the minutes? Do we do that? Have it recorded? All those that sat out there? Someone be willing to motion that this evening? John?
A motion to advise administration to maintain its current expulsion, um, philosophy and procedures for the upcoming school year.
Second.
Right, John, a second by Maria, any additional questions or discussions on that motion or this topic? Vote on that? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. At this time, would anyone like anything bolt from the consent agenda? Otherwise, seeing no hands or hearing nobody, I would look for a, um, motion this evening? Maria?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which includes the minutes of the June thirteen, twenty nineteen meeting, claims, vouchers and receipts totaling five million four hundred three thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. The personnel report, which includes the hirings of Sadie Boyle, elementary guidance counselor effective August twenty, twenty nineteen. Amy Dinjess, HR finance assistant, effective date to be determined. David Dreewick, study space supervisor, effective August twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. Kevin Keefe, MATA secretary, effectively, effective July eight, twenty nineteen. And Megan Kautzer, MHS associate principal, effective date to be determined. And the resignations of Jessica Dubois, effective June twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. Carrie Pershala, effective Ju- July one, twenty nineteen. And Kathy McCoy, effective at the end of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Cherish Toy, effective at the end of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And Paula Norman, effective at the end of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And donations totaling one thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Paul? Twenty nineteen? Flat out, twenty nineteen, Jeremy?
Oh, yeah, twenty nineteenth.
Jeremy abstentions on the portion he was not able to attend. Want that, please, thank you. Items for future meeting and possible action to improve future discussions there. Clarifying point for those that were not in attendance last meeting, decided to streamline the process. Anyone has any items or recommendations for future meetings? What we will do is we will bring that up this evening and then we will just have a simple majority vote. You will be asking, in essence, the board to bring that to the next, the next committee prior to going to the next school board meeting. So if the majority of our peers do not agree that that is priority for committee and board work, then, um, then we will not put it on there. Sometimes we need to prioritize and that was the most smooth way that we could come up with in short order. With that being stated, does anyone have any items to motion or potential future meetings?
Yeah, I had a community member ask me about our policy, I'm not sure if policy is the right word, or procedure for either marketing or making G A stadium available for community events, whether it be weddings, whether it be get togethers, you know, whatever people may want to use it for. If there is a policy or procedure in place, if we could review that at some point?
Okay, so we have a recommended item to go to probably facilities committee? Yeah. All those in favor of that being added to facilities committee? Just have a show of hands, signify aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? We will add that on to facilities.
Appreciate it.
And then bring that to the board as warranted. John, do you?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that the curriculum, people services, technology committee take up a discussion on the whereas resolution presented by the bus drivers this evening.
Okay. John, have brought a topic up. Something to add, Dr. Sample?
I'm just, um, if you CTP.
I picked that because of buses and people services.
And I was thinking too, safety, facility, um, yeah, that, that would be fine. We could go there and Dale, who's, who's in charge of transportation, could be there. And that would be helpful.
Do you agree that the safety committee also at the same time, wouldn't hurt your feelings?
Yeah, I mean, I guess based on their resolution, they're also asking for staffing and coordination and so there's a lot of.
HR finance, maybe?
There's a lot of elements, maybe eventually. You determine whether you need them and then we'll determine if you can finance them.
Gotcha, or if it's gonna be in HR, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
CTP sounds good.
An item recommended by Mr. Smith for a future set of committee meetings, all those in favor of that being added, committee will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? For proving that to be considered at the minimum level? Really, do you have something to add?
That was just an aye.
Cause I did that the first time. Yes, yeah, through your curve, sorry.
It's all right.
Anyone else have other topics to bring up for future meetings? I did have one, some people had reached out to me as well. I would look to bring to, and I'm thinking, finance and HR is the place to talk about this would be, um, discussing summer camps at school forest. Currently, we go to great lengths of having eighth grade and younger there and they are very well attended. So now what I'm hearing from these parents of soon to be freshmen are disappointed that there's not a week for the next year or two that they can go to the school forest and enjoy that. I know we've looked at many ways to, and we haven't looked at that. So I would like to see if that is indeed the case, that we kept that at eighth grade level for safety or different things, or to have that discussion. Perhaps finance, HR or school forest.
To include high school age?
To, yes. To clarify what ages are there and if it's kept at eighth grade, why and can we move it to high school age?
Sure.
I was just curious, my granddaughters, they're, last year, it was a three-day visit, a four-day visit, they really have it. And they were very impressed when they got back. And I think that's, we've got a beautiful school forest.
Right.
We should be sharing with the students.
Indeed.
Let me see, there's a lot of places they'll have it as part of their system.
And I know that's a step that we've talked about before, that they've expanded that from perhaps one week and just part of summer school curriculum now to be well thought out with, I believe, four different sessions. Of everything, of a wilderness camp to a fitness, for boys, for girls, co-ed, different things. So there are four different ones, I believe, now.
Just, can I clarify why finance and HR, like what angle are you taking it? Financial affordability angle or?
Do they pay to go?
And that's, that's what I'm trying to verify, perhaps Mr. Dasher can lighten us up at that time on, on what we get for a pro-rated account. Get into the enrollment numbers and what the impact is. And we can go through also the second part of that, if you think that should be CTP on the curriculum.
Basically, you're asking us to review whether or not it would be financially advantageous to per, to expand the program so that we can get more partial FTE credits for summer?
Sure, if it's not already.
If it's plausible, okay, I just wanted to see what direction we were going.
We also think that CTP on the curriculum side is important, we can ask for both.
One last thing.
Go ahead.
We checklist around the student seat, and Evers, Lawson, and Angel, if they have, Angel, Angel has a school forest, and Evers does have a nice one. And Lawson has a nice one, and just out of curiosity, what they're doing, I mean, don't reinvent the wheel, no matter.
Sure.
And I know Russ is in contact with them, not just for summer, but, but any other programs they may run throughout the school year. But I will follow up with that as well, yeah.
We should have a meeting like this, so we're always working with the students for the board.
I like that idea.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, excellent idea.
We could even have a workshop, that's a great idea. Just to make sure that that.
We do trust.
Put on a future committee or a series of committee meetings, uh, on that particular topic, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed, say nay? Any extensions? I'll have to correct committees later. Anybody else have any other items they'd like to bring up for future meetings? So most. Paul, we've got a couple of things I want to go through, but I, I like your, your skipping ahead to my, your favorite last item, but I, I will make it brief, I promise. So just review, please, the attached running list of requested item, items of unfinished items for future meetings. We have gone through a few of those and we will continue to take those off of the list and prioritize, Dr. Sample and myself, for putting them on future committee and board agendas. We also have the awareness piece on the board decision for the financial impact summary. Document is just a running tally that was attached for each board meeting per a board member's request some time ago as a standing agenda item. The radio schedule happens to be this week, Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, at eight fifteen AM, Blue J seven thirty radio station. Are we both in attendance or is that?
It's Kevin.
Okay, so you are, that's right, you are busy at that seminar, so. Then it did move location, so.
Where's the new location?
If I get lost, it's, it's right by courtside furniture.
That's where they started from, they were not.
I must have missed that memo.
Correct, so tune in at eight fifteen as I, it's scary to invite either Vice President Maria or Treasurer John because they both love to be on the radio. If not, I will tackle that myself.
Abstain.
We could do karaoke.
Again, yeah, Lon, Lon would love that.
All right, we could consider.
We have a singing superintendent. We have a singing superintendent, we don't want to, maybe we could do that some other time, you know, Maps has talent or something.
I feel like it, Top John's Double Down to Georgia.
Right. With that being said, our future meetings, the first one that I would mention is the one discussed this evening, a special Board of Education meeting for this Thursday. Tammy will send out invites if she hasn't already for this Thursday at 4:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. The Finance HR Committee meeting meets next on Wednesday, August 7th at 4:30 in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting is slated for Monday, August 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Maple Grove. The next CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 13th, 3:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Followed directly by the Policy Committee meeting that evening, Tuesday, August 13th, 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. We do have, make sure we're circling our calendars for the Special Board of Education meeting for DAPES training on Wednesday, August 14th. DAPES is the acronym for the District Administration Performance Evaluation System Training. That will start at 4:30. That will be an evening of learning and understanding that new tool for the evaluation process. And our next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 21st, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. This time, I would look to Paul for that motion for adjournment. As a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Maria, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hallelujah.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned, 7:03 p.m. Thank you.